How many are in your troops, sir?
Approximately thirty.
Scout thirty. That's very cool. Thanks for being here. Okay, we're gonna move on to Agenda Item Number Three. And Suzanne Leclair.
Thank you Mayor Levy. This evening we have two appointments. We have one to the Woodland Park Beautiful Committee and one to the Utility Advisory Committee. Starting with the Woodland Park Beautiful Committee, we have had a couple openings there, and Mr. Gary Rollins applied to be on the committee. You all have a copy of his application. He's unable to be with us this evening. If appointed, I can swear him in at a later date. And then regarding the Utilities Advisory Committee, we have Rick McVeigh who's back there, everybody knows Rick in the back, and he is applying to be on the Utilities Advisory Committee. And you have his application. This term will expire on May 31st, 2019.
Counsel? Any questions? You wanna talk to Mr. McVeigh who's been on UAC for some time? Anybody?
I'm encouraged by the fact that he's here this evening and wants to serve some more time on UAC.
Rick, why don't you come up and give us your name and address and just say hi before we tell you we'd love to have you back.
Hi, everyone. My name's Rick McVeigh. I live at 110 East Lake, just the other side of the park. I've been a resident for about thirty years. Served for several years on the UAC, went through some significant life changes a year and a half or so ago and resigned my position, but I think we've worked out ways that I can resit on this committee. I've enjoyed it in the past. I know there are no serious issues at the moment coming up, but certainly some very significant ones coming soon.
Thanks for applying again and I look forward to, I would have the opportunity as John did to work with Rick on advisory, on utilities advisory a few years ago, and I know how passionate you are about it, so thanks for stepping up.
Sure.
Suzanne, how do you want to do this? You wanna take these one at a time?
Yes, please, sir.
Okay, so Mr. Rollins is first?
Yes.
Okay. Counsel to approve Mr. Rollins for keeping Woodland Park Beautiful. Move approval. Appoint Gary Rollins.
Second.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sonier?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries six zero.
Thank you Suzanne. Okay, one more time for Rick McVeigh. Second. Thank you. UAC. Suzanne?
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sonier?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries six zero.
Would you like to swear Rick in there?
I would be delighted to, thank you. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I repeat, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Colorado, the Charter and the principles of the City of Woodland Park, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the Utility Advisory Committee, return upon the balance end. That works. You can keep doing this one, please.
Yeah. Yes. Thanks very much, Rick. Thank you. Thanks for your contributions. Thank you Suzanne. I'm gonna wait till you sit down and then I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you Mayor Levy. Tonight, it is the time of year where we need to appoint a member of the City Council to the CML Policy Committee. As Counsel may recall, Mayor Pro Tem Harvey has been in this position, and she desires to continue in this position if you would like her to. So I'm asking for approval to appoint Mayor Pro Tem Harvey to the Policy Review Committee for CML, and also that we can have an alternate if needed. I read the paperwork, and if there's anyone, if Mayor Pro Tem Harvey cannot be there, then that alternate can attend.
The Policy Committee meets four times a year, and the next meeting will be in October, and CML Policy Committee really gets down into the nitty gritty of those issues before the state legislature that impact small communities in particular, but all municipalities across the state. It's an opportunity also for any of us to introduce legislation and ask the CML to sponsor it for us. Four meetings a year, not including the CML conferences held every summer, but I've enjoyed the work very often. The issues that they do address are those that affect the larger metropolitan areas of the state, but they are still a great advocate for small communities as well. I would like to continue to serve Woodland Park and represent the Council on that, but it'd be really great if we had an alternate to come along too.
Do you have any burning issues that you're gonna bring to the, do you have anything you have in mind?
I haven't, I don't have any burning issues. I haven't seen the agenda for the October meeting. When I do, I'll push that out to the Council members, but there have been issues that have been addressed that talk to affordable housing. There have been issues that address some of the self-inflicted problems that the states had with recreational marijuana, and those obviously do impact us as well. But yes, when the agenda comes out, I'll push that out to the Council, and I will take your thoughts and concerns to the Policy Committee meeting, where I'll meet with them in October. And it always snows the day of that meeting, so.
I keep pretty close tabs, like probably the whole rest of the Council, everybody does. We get that newsletter. I read it pretty extensively and go to the links on it. It's pretty interesting to keep track of what's really going on in the state through CML, in addition to going to conferences, of course.
Are you volunteering to be the alternate?
I don't see anybody else. I would be, I would be, I'd like to have the opportunity, unless somebody else has burning desire.
No, I'd be glad to share that with you.
Makes sense. Or I can wait tables to swish.
We can do this in motion, appointing both at the same time.
Okay. I'd like to ask Carol a question before we vote. Is the topic of, I don't wanna ask this, is the CML satisfied with the construction defects situation?
They have supported the legislation that addresses that as an issue for developers that are sponsoring affordable housing projects, well actually for all multifamily and housing projects in particular. I think that they have been a strong advocate for that. I'm not sure what question you're asking.
Well, there was something of a compromise reached in the last session, which was unusual because it's been on the agenda for years, but there haven't been the votes of support. And so when I asked, I called it a compromise, but it does allow homeowners associations, for example, to go after the repair or the fixing of a construction defect without having to file a lawsuit. And so I think that's a good compromise at this point.
I think that's gonna be back on the agenda in October for sure.
Yep.
And please let me know what your feelings are, and I'll be as loud as I can.
Okay. And you can.
Call for motion to approve. I'd make a motion to appoint back Mayor Pro Tem Harvey and her backup, Al Carr, to the CML Policy Board. Second. Thank you Suzanne.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sonier?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
And Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries six zero.
That's great, thanks. Thanks for participating in that. Carol does do a great job, so thank you very much. We'll move on to Item Number Three C. Do you want me to read the proclamation first or call Allison?
If you wouldn't mind calling Allison, she's here in the audience, and she has a little, a commercial she'd like to show you.
That's great. Allison Plute, is Plute correct?
That's correct.
Great. If you'll just come and restate your name and your address for us, and tell us what you need to tell us.
Absolutely. Thank you for having me. Good evening, my name is Allison Plute, and I teach people not to. I'm the Fountain Creek Watershed Project Manager for Colorado Springs Utilities, and I chair the Creek Week Steering Committee. And the Creek Week Cleanup is now become the largest cleanup event in the state of Colorado. Over the last three years, we've engaged 5,000 volunteers to remove 30 tons of litter throughout the entire watershed. So we're very pleased to announce the fourth annual event beginning September 30th. You'll have your own cleanup right here in Woodland Park, starting behind the Walmart, which is actually the headwaters of Fountain Creek itself. And the great thing about this is it brings the community together, it beautifies our environment, it protects our water quality, and the things that we're doing up here at the headwaters have impacts all the way down to the Gulf of Mexico. That's where Fountain Creek empties out into. So we have, this is very large-reaching impactful program that we're proud to bring to you. So I do have some information for you all about the different events. As I mentioned, Woodland Parks is gonna be Saturday, October 7th, beginning at 9:00 AM, behind the Walmart. And we provide the bags and the gloves, with really cool headbands, you can keep the sweat off your brow, and it's just a great way to give back. And most cleanup events only take about an hour or two, so everyone's got that kind of time. That's why we created as a week-long event, nine full days, that allows people to go out on weekends, after work, in the morning, whenever they're able to. So, quick 30-second commercial, are we able to show that?
I can hand those out to you.
Perfect, thank you. You're invited to help clean up our parks, trails, and waterways during the fourth annual Creek Week Cleanup, happening September 30th through October 8th. This nine-day event happens each fall, bringing citizens in El Paso, Teller, and Pueblo Counties together to remove trash and debris from our land and water. Create a Creek Crew with your family, friends, coworkers, or church group, and make a big difference for our communities and the environment. Let's all work together to make our waterways cleaner and safer for humans and wildlife to enjoy during Creek Week. There you have it.
Well, thank you very much Allison. I see a bunch of Boy Scouts here. Already thinking about October 7th.
Perfect. And the new head of Keep Woodland Park Beautiful, I mean, this is just perfect timing.
There you go. Thanks very much. I'm gonna read this proclamation, we'll put it in the record, and we appreciate all that you do. Whereas, Woodland Park is fortunate to have extensive and diverse natural resources, such as forests, grasslands, riparian areas, lakes, creeks, and a wide variety of open spaces. And whereas the Fountain Creek Watershed, including Fountain Creek, related wetlands, existing trails, and recreational facilities, is a unique watershed that is an important resource and asset to the residents and visitors of Woodland Park and the Pike's Peak Region. And whereas the Fountain Creek Watershed Flood Control and Greenway District is partnering with the City of Colorado Springs, Colorado Springs Utilities, El Paso County, Pueblo County, the Cities of Manitou Springs, Fountain, and towns of Monument and Green Mountain Falls, along with numerous community organizations, to coordinate the Creek Week Cleanup, which will encourage the protection, restoration, and maintenance of the Fountain Creek Watershed. And whereas this nine-day litter cleanup effort kicks off in Fountain Creek Regional Park on September 30th, and runs through October 8th, 2017, throughout the watershed. And whereas Creek Week programs and activities are designed to raise awareness about the littering issue within our watershed, to encourage organizations and individuals to collect litter and debris to make Fountain Creek and the watershed cleaner and safer. And whereas businesses, churches, schools, nonprofits, neighborhood associations, youth groups, service clubs, and individuals are encouraged to form a Creek Crew to clean up at a Creek Week project site. And whereas Creek Week litter removal activities will reduce pollution in our creeks and clogs in our waterways that can lead to flooding, provide for a safer drinking water supply, and enhance wildlife habitat and property values. Now therefore, this, Council members of the City of Woodland Park, Colorado hereby proclaim September 30th through October 8th, 2017, as Creek Week in Colorado Springs, and encourages our citizens to help protect, restore, and maintain our waterways by participating in Creek Week activities. Done this seventh day of September 2017 in Woodland Park, Colorado, and signed by the City Council members. Thank you very much Allison.
Thank you. Appreciate your support.
Thank you. Okay. We'll move on. Jane Madden.
Mayor, Counsel, we are here again to discuss Cities and Towns Weeks, celebrate the CML recognition of Cities and Towns Weeks. We join all of the, or many municipalities across the state to connect with residents and remind them of the vital services provided by their city workers, and to thank just a small handful of those workers. We've been able to thank some of the folks that we don't usually think about. Several of those have been recognized at City Council. Some of the ones that we've had in the newspaper who have not been recognized at Council. Not sure if we talked about Rusty Anthony Cruz Chief, who helped us with an issue with a part-time resident getting some water to their house. We also wanted to thank the city employees who were involved in the parking utilization audit, Dave Burgess, Darlene Jensen, Amy Wolin, Laura Pellegrino, and Mayor Pro Tem, Carol Harvey. We thanked the bright and smiling faces from the Finance Office, who provide amazing public service, including Kristy Huber, Judy Bundy, Cheryl McMahon, and Barb Owens. And we will have an ad next week in the paper to thank Kelsey Gavitt from the Parks and Rec Department, who came in on the Saturday, on the Saturday of Labor Day weekend, to fix a glitch in our website when we lost posting of the City Council packet for tonight. So Kelsey came in and took care of that, and we're very happy that she was able to do that. We just want to remind everybody to thank a city worker and help us celebrate Cities and Towns Week next week. And you all have pot holders provided to us by CML. And so after Mayor Levy reads the resolution, we'd love to get a picture of everybody with her pot holders. And the pot holders which say we've got you covered. That's from your staff to you.
Not the state-mandated issue that you were referring to.
Yeah.
All right, Jane, thanks very much. I will read the proclamation, and we will don our hats. Recognizing Woodland Park's participation in Colorado Municipal League Cities and Towns Week, September 11th through 17th, 2017. Whereas municipal government is the government closest to most citizens, and the one with the most direct daily impact upon its residents. And whereas municipal government is administered for and by its citizens and is dependent upon public commitment to and understanding of its many responsibilities. And whereas Colorado Cities and Towns Week is a very important time to recognize the important role played by municipal government and municipal workers in our lives. And whereas the City of Woodland Park recognizes this opportunity to thank a city worker, the folks who make the city run. And whereas all city workers were recognized and thanked by the city's annual safety picnic with keychain measuring tapes and the message, "It's impossible to measure your impact." And whereas Woodland Park City Council and citizens are reminded of the role of city workers with pot holders, and the message, "We've got you covered." Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Woodland Park observes Cities and Towns Week and encourages all citizens, elected officials, and city workers to celebrate the week, and remember to thank a city worker, passed and adopted, this seventh day of September 2017. Thanks very much. So I guess I can start. We've got a great staff of folks here on the podium, and some in the audience, and we just couldn't be what we are without our city staff. Certainly our council helps in any way we can, but the real work, as all of you know, are done by the folks that are sitting here, and Sally, and Jane, and Mike, and everybody that's involved. We've got a great community of city workers, and they're an anomaly, they really are. They're hardworking, they work great together, and we are very fortunate to live in such a great community, so thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there additional pot holders in the back, or pot pads in the back for anybody, but let me get, okay, you'll need to have that.
Careful what you say about pot.
I should use it. All right. Thank you very much.
This one looks used, actually.
Mine doesn't fit. Oh, you missed it? Aw geez. Okay, yes.
Norma's requesting a retake.
Oh, sorry, Norma.
I turned my camera off instead of getting it.
Yeah, this is one for.
Is this front page news?
Yeah, time capsule.
There you go. I can see the headline there. Sounds like the jackpot. Okay, we'll move on to Item Number Three C, and Anna Wieland. Where's Anna? There she is. If you'll come forward Anna, and just give us your name and address.
Hi, my name's Anna Wieland, and I live at 1023 Mateo Camino.
Thank you.
In June, one afternoon, I was driving home, and got home, and there was a small cinnamon bear that was trapped by the Division of Wildlife that drove right by my house. And I was pretty distressed when I saw that. About a week later, I went to the July 4th celebration at Memorial Park, and I realized that there were not all bear-proof containers at Memorial Park. And I was a little disappointed considering that we had, the city had spent so much money on the park and not taken care of that issue. on the park and not taken care of that issue. I had talked with the Joe who volunteers with the Division of Wildlife, and talked to him about how maybe we could possibly encourage the city to buy bear-proof containers for Memorial Park. And I also volunteered that day to be on the Bear Ware Committee. I went to a few houses in my neighborhood and handed out some information to residents that were not putting their trash in at night. And they were pretty receptive. They went ahead and put their trash cans in their garages. And I realized that the DOW is encouraging residents of Woodland Park to bring in their trash at night to not attract bears, but the City of Woodland Park is not doing their job. So I would like to propose that, a budget proposal, that the City of Woodland Park buy an additional three bear-proof containers for Memorial Park. And I talked with David Butterby about this. He encouraged me that those bear-proof containers would be put in by October, and is that still the case, David?
When you're done, Anna, I'll give the summary.
Okay. Also, I went over to Meadowwood Park, and I realized there were 15 non-bear-proof containers at Meadowwood Park. Then I talked with Jill, who's on the Main Street Committee. She said, "Well, don't stop there because there's non-bear-proof trash containers at the pavilion where we have concerts. There's two of them there. There's also one non-bear-proof trash container in front of the Cultural Center." So that's three at Memorial Park, 15 at Meadowwood, and three additional bear-proof trash containers. Then I talked with my neighbor Fred, who works for Waste Management, and he said, "Well, you know, the city, if they really want to make sure that they're not attracting bears to city property, they also need to be taking care of their dumpsters." And when I talked with Joe, he had mentioned that, I think it was with you, Neil, that he had worked with you at the restaurant to bear-proof the dumpster that you had at your restaurant. And so Fred was saying that you really need to have metal, a metal top, and then a bar. And so I went and did a little bit of snooping, and I noticed that the trash, the receptacle in back of the, well, back of the city building here is plastic. And then the one by the U-Pass Plas, excuse me, U-Pass Cultural Center is also plastic. So the dumpsters are not bear-proof either. So I would like to encourage the city to also bear-proof the dumpsters that we have. And I don't know if that entails getting a new provider, as far as whether you use Waste Management or Teller County Waste, but I really believe that those need to be taken care of also. Have a budget proposal in dollars. I don't know if you want to hear that right now. I figured...
Why don't you, Anna, I just want to stop you here. Let's, you can pass that over to David at some point.
Okay.
I don't think we need to go through it, but I'd like to get his side of it and see where we're headed in that direction.
Okay, thank you.
But thank you very much. Do you have anything else? I'm sorry.
Um, no.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Anna, is the proposal that you're speaking of, when you provided to me...
Right, but I need to add to that, and that was the two that are at the pavilion and one that's in front of the U-Pass Cultural Center. So there needs to be three additional.
When you update that, why don't you get it to me?
Okay.
We have had a chance to visit, so I thank you for your passion on wanting to take care of the critters that live in our community, and also provide safety to our community as well. We've had made some progress, council, in Memorial Park. Currently, we have five bear-proof cans there, two that aren't. The two that aren't, we empty those frequently. We've not had a bear issue there to date. That doesn't mean we shouldn't remove them, but what we found is that once the bear-proof cans get filled, particularly in Memorial Park, which has been heavily used these days, people then just stack their trash outside of the can. And so it becomes that hazard either way, whether it's in a blue, non-bear-proof can or whether it's stacked outside of the can. So what we've chosen to do is to leave the two non-bear-proof cans there in concert with the five bear-proof ones, so that at least there's a receptacle that the trash can be collected in. There were a couple of parks that Anna did not mention. We've got bear-proof cans in Crestwood, Red Mountain Park. The majority of Meadowwoods are bear-proof. There's only a couple that aren't. We've replaced some of those. I'm not sure where you went. There you are. We've replaced some of those already with some of the bear-proof cans. Cavalier Park has one of each, and we intend to replace that non-one relatively soon. Berkestrum has one bear-proof, one non-bear-proof. Lions Park, Trailhead, and the Cultural Center, she's absolutely right, those don't have bear-proof cans. We haven't had issues there. They're about $825 each, so to make the correction, it's about a $15,000 one-time buy. What we've been doing the last few years is as we are able, as we approach the end of the year, because these aren't relatively too expensive, we buy one or two and get them installed. So I'll be happy to have her information, and then we'll have it as we go through the budget discussion, and I can take council's guidance from there. But that's where we sit from a community of having bear-proof trash cans. And again, thank you, Anna.
Counsel, any comment? Carol?
The dumpster issue, is that a matter of the provider, or is that, can we purchase our own dumpsters?
We can work through that. The, you know, sometimes you avoid problems, but sometimes you rely on history. In the 20 years I've been here, we've never had a bear in the dumpster that's behind City Hall. I can't speak to the one at the Cultural Center. It's not an expensive fix, but it's time-consuming. We've got several different entities that use that, the teen center, the senior center, and so on, and it does take some manipulation. It's a heavier metal door that has bars and things like that. We'll look at some opportunities to see what we can do to make sure that we're still providing a safe service for the people that are using the dumpsters.
I appreciate the presentation, and I know that we'll look at that as we look at the budget. But along those same lines, what progress have we made with the Department of Wildlife on deer population?
None. We have exchanged some more emails between the chief and I. We're still looking at different options that might exist. I think we're looking at coming back with another, help me out, Miles, another count. Okay, when was that going to be? In the wintertime, and I think we were planning on coming back to council then in January, February with some ideas.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Ms. Wieland? I'm sorry, didn't see you. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Appreciate your concern and moving forward, as the city manager has said, and do the best we can. Beth?
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item number 3F, and one more time, you get to hear me read a proclamation. This one for Arbor Day, which is, happens to be 9/11 this year, so an easy day to remember. And here we go. So the proclamation reads, "Whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed in 1872 with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is celebrated nationwide and around the world. And whereas trees can help reduce the erosion of precious topsoil by wind and water, lower heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees symbolize enduring strength and are a renewable source that provide paper and wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless beneficial products. And whereas trees in the City of Woodland Park increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business and public areas, and beautify the committee. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal." Now therefore, I kneel, Levy, Mayor of the City of Woodland Park, do hereby proclaim Monday, this Monday, September 11th, 2017, as Arbor Day in the City of Woodland Park, and encourage all citizens and businesses to join in the celebration thereof, and to support efforts to protect trees and woodlands by preserving the natural and urban forest and planting trees to promote the well-being of this and all future generations dated this seventh day of September. There will be an Arbor Day celebration, and I'm sure these are around, but I'll read it, hosted by Park and Rec and the Gardeners with Altitude Garden Club. It's Monday, September 11th, from 3:00 to 5:00 o'clock. And it says here, "Join us in celebrating 25 years as a Tree City USA community. Wear your work clothes, bring your work gloves, and a shovel to help us plant trees in celebration of Arbor Day. Snacks and beverages will be provided, and the event will be at Crestwood Park, which is on Valley View Drive." Great event. We're gonna be busy this coming Monday. Okay. Counsel McCarthy, thank you for your glasses. We'll move on. No additions, deletions, or corrections, and Suzanne will move on to the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. This evening on tonight's consent calendar, we have the minutes from the August 3rd, 2017, regular council meeting, and then we have the statement of expenditures for the month of July, 2017.
Thank you, Suzanne. Counsel, we have questions for Mike or for Suzanne? If not, we'll just call for a motion. Go ahead, Norma. Did you ask something?
No, no.
I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, I could go there later.
Okay. Just call for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second. Thank you, Suzanne.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sonnier?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, Suzanne. We have no unfinished business tonight, nor ordinances on initial posting. So we'll move on to our one public hearing tonight, approving ordinance number 1311, and Mike Farina, welcome.
As always.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight before you is the first supplemental appropriation for 2017's budget. As you may recall, the council approved the 2017 annual budget on December 15th. The proposed budget revision for you tonight includes three items, all in the general fund. First completion, first, the completion of the Aquatic Center project. An increase of $244,600 is necessary to complete the project. Of this amount, about $74,700 was for costs budgeted in 2016 but incurred in 2017. We need to carry forward that amount into 2017's budget. And then the rest, $169,900, is needed to fund the entire construction contract, which includes the installation of the slide. To date, a total of $498,000 has been donated for this project, and then $195,600 has come in in 2017. Secondly, an increase of $97,200 is necessary to fund completion of the Memorial Park improvement project. This is all carry forward from the 2016 budget into 2017, again, for costs that were budgeted in 2016 but incurred in 2017. And lastly, or third, two police officer positions were frozen as a part of the 2017 annual budget. But on July 20th, council approved filling one of these positions, so therefore we need to add $25,000 to the budget to fund the cost of this police officer position for the remainder of the year. Revenues are sufficient to cover the proposed revision, and projected ending fund balance is slightly higher than the amount originally budgeted. First reading of the supplemental appropriation was August 3rd, and tonight is the public hearing and second reading, and we seek your approval.
And counsel, before you ask Mike questions or have your discussion, just a reminder to reiterate what he emphasized, is that these are not overages of these budget items. They're carry forward from 2016, those things that you've already approved from a contractual perspective. This just catches us up so that we don't do one large supplemental appropriation at year's end. This is what you asked us to do, and this is what Mike is providing for you this evening.
Quick question for the chief. Have we made a hire yet?
Yes, sir. Dakota Kimbrel starts Monday morning.
With a smile on your face, good for you.
Absolutely.
Good for all of us. Counsel, questions?
How's your workload with the police department? How you guys doing with that?
We are extremely busy, hopefully. We usually use Memorial to Labor Day as our metrics for the busy time of the year, and so I'm hoping for a bit of a reprieve. But we're running kind of a skeleton crew right now, so we're looking forward to getting him on. We've also been able to fill the grant-funded position for Drug Prevention School Resource Officer. That person, Tim Bradley, started this Tuesday. So we're trying to get caught up in our staffing.
Do we have two resource officers, or one and a half?
We have a resource officer that is paid 80% by the school. That would be Shannon Everhart, and then we have Greg Guiman as the other school resource officer. And the third resource officer that I hired is a grant-funded position, and all he does is mainly teaching functions.
Excuse me, what does he teach?
His purpose is to take a lot of the load off of the other officers, because currently they're not able to spend time teaching and fulfill their commitments for DARE class, internet safety, and a lot of the other things that they do based on their caseload. This officer is able to do a lot of those ancillary duties as a school resource officer. We've got about 2,400 kids that we're trying to assist the school district with, and so they keep us very busy.
And what is DARE, chief?
Drug Awareness Resistance Education.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Anything else? We are in public comment. If anybody in the audience has a question for counsel or Mr. Farina? Okay, if not, we'll call for a motion to approve ordinance number 1311.
So moved.
Second. Thank you, Suzanne.
Sonnier?
Are we, I'm sorry, are we voting on the increase in the budget on this?
No, sir.
No, not at all.
Thank you. Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, Suzanne. I have a feeling that we're gonna have a few folks that are gonna leave now. Is that correct? Once again, we'd like to thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Take a couple minutes and let you all take off.
Mayor, let me make a comment real quick on council member Sonnier's question about increasing the budget, because I don't want there to be a misunderstanding. The slide actually was an increase in the contract with the general contractor that council approved some months ago, the cost of which has been covered by the contingency fund within the contract and also donations from the community. So the budget did increase, but so did the revenue stream to cover those expenses, as was explained to council when we modified the contract.
And the number from the contingency fund was considered was...
It was about $130,000 of contingency funds, and there's been about $110,000 in contributions.
Pushed to the slide?
The slide was 239,088, and so it was covered by those two pots of money.
Anybody else? Okay, move on to public comment not on the agenda, and I see Deb Miller has signed up tonight. Mrs. Miller, welcome.
Thank you very much. Debbie Miller, 210 East Midland Avenue. I came here for a reason, to talk about Oktoberfest, but before I do that, and since it is Cities and Towns Week, there is a city staff person here tonight that I do want to personally think I love working with all of the city staff, that Chrissy Stapelford went up and above board when I called, and we did lots of emails back and forth, and believe it or not, we have our city candidates forum scheduled for March 13th, 2018. I know that hasn't crossed any of your minds yet. I know that hasn't crossed any of your minds yet, but we have to plan ahead to make sure we get all of that going. So Chrissy, thank you. She did a lot of calling to rearrange schedules and things like that. So I'm here tonight, though, to talk to you about our 20th Annual Oktoberfest. I hope each of you have gotten your letter of invitation to come and help us tap our ceremonial keg. I have a pretty cool announcement. There won't just be one keg to tap this year. There will be two ceremonial kegs. So as you know, when you have your beer mug there, those are your kegs. So once it's tapped, you're able to enjoy the music, enjoy our event. We are so thrilled. We have some changes in rearranging of the layout this year. We will have a football tent this year. We will have TV available on Saturday to be able to watch college football. And Sunday, the Broncos happen to be playing, and we need to attract people here to our event instead of going to Denver to watch them in person. I don't know why that's important, but... So there's a lot of cool things happening. We hope you'll come out. That is next Saturday and Sunday, September 16th and 17th. We've posted the weather in our office, so once it's posted, it has to stay sunny and nice, so we don't expect that to change. But anyway, thank you all for everything you do to help us be able to put on that event.
Thanks very much, Deb. Always a great event. Lots of people. What, 5,000, 6,000 people?
5,000.
5,000 people come. And since I don't drink, more beer for you guys. I know you're happy about that. Okay.
Okay.
We'll move on. If there's no more public comment. Okay. Mayor's report. I've got a number of announcements today. And start with tomorrow night, first home football game for Woodland Park High School. Love to see all of you out there and support our guys. We've got, gonna have great weather, and it's a great venue, so let's try to fill that place up tomorrow night. 7:00, I believe, is the kickoff at the high school football field. Every Friday, including tomorrow, from 8:00 to 1:00 at Woodland Park Farmer's Market in Memorial Park, the greatest venue in the world, Sally, for a farmer's market. It's just been an amazing summer over there, even withstanding the weather. September 9th, that's this Saturday, from 7:00 to 2:00, is the citywide garage sale in the high school parking lot. Also, September 9th, a big event for our community is the Cruise Above the Clouds, and that car show will be at Memorial Park this year. It'll start at 8:00 o'clock and go to 3:00 in the afternoon, and it's just a really fun event for you, what do they call them, deerheads? And the rest of you that... There's a lot of old cars there, so most of the council enjoys that. It's a fun event. Weather's supposed to be good, so hopefully we'll see a bunch of you out there on Saturday. Saturday also, from 11:00 to 1:30, the Woodland Music Series, 50's and 60's Classic Rock in the Midland Pavilion, also something that benefits this council, 50's and 60's Classic Rock. Monday, September 11th, is really an important day, I think. 9/11 for all of us in this country have a lot to be thankful for, a lot to remember, a lot of people to thank for sure. So at 7:00 in Lyons Park, they'll be putting the flags out, but at 9:30 to 10:30, there'll be a community tribute in Lyons Park this coming Monday. Please tell all your friends, I'm sure everyone here has an hour to spend. I know city staff has been encouraged. Encourage your friends. I went last year, it was the 15th anniversary last year, and it was great. My only thought leaving there was, gosh darn it, there just wasn't enough people there. So we need to honor our folks that support us and that fight for us, and give thanks to everybody that provided help during the 9/11 time for our country. And so Monday, once again, 9:30 to 11:30 at Lyons Park, it's gonna be a great event. Saturday, September 16th, and Sunday, September 17th, as Deb said, from 11:00 to 6:00, the 20th Annual Rocky Mountain Oktoberfest Plus at the U-Pass Cultural Center, and we already know we're gonna have great weather. Tuesday, September 19th, is the Business After Hours. This week will be at the Pikes Peak Regional Hospital. And I think that's all I have. Girl?
Really no report tonight, Mr. Mayor, but in keeping with City and Towns Week, one of the things that I've learned in the last week, two weeks, as part of the response for Hurricane Harvey and now Hurricane Irma, is the importance of a public information officer. And I would like to extend my appreciation and true respect for our own public information officer, Jane Mann, and I think you've been a great addition to the city staff. I hope we never have to use your PIO talents during a crisis, but you've represented the city very well, and I thank you for that, Jane.
Thanks, girl. Well?
Main Street put in their budget, fortunately. We're a little past our deadline, but we got the budget. We're circling around resolution and bylaws, and we should have that resolved within the next couple of weeks. So Main Street is progressing along on their checkmarks towards designation.
Now, I've got a question for you and John, as long as I got you. On the Bird Committee, I know we're gonna talk October 5th, is that correct? Will council and city manager have a copy of your report prior to that, I'm hoping?
Well, we're planning to give a presentation and then hand it out at the meeting for discussion sometime after that.
We won't get to see it before that?
I don't think so. That's not the plan.
Yeah, that's not the plan, huh? Okay. I will consider changing your plan. I think it'd be great so nobody gets blindsided.
Well, we don't intend to discuss it that night. Just kind of give a presentation, here we go, and sometime after that.
We're not gonna discuss it that night? It's just gonna be a presentation?
Because it wouldn't be fair to discuss it, because nobody's seen it, as you said.
Does it make any sense to let us see it before that? So we can discuss it that night?
I think it will be prepared hours beforehand, to be honest.
So... Okay. If, in fact, it's prepared before that and feel fit that we should be able to see it before they actually present it, I think that would be, I think that's a great idea, for those of us. Okay, Ken?
I have nothing.
Paul?
Yeah. I do have something. I wasn't gonna talk about it, but it came up, about a deer count in January or February. The deer population is increasing heavily right now, and there's a lot of mean deers out there. I'd like to know, we should take into consideration migration path of these deer, where they're crossing most frequently and why they're crossing, because of water sources and other things. Possibly installing elk fence and leading the deer into a certain area, illuminating that area with a downward light, also adding signs to the City of Woodland Park deer crossing to try to help this population out. Also, awareness of not feeding deer. Maybe it would be wise to bring insurance companies in on this to extend their thoughts and ideas and the amount of incidences and claims they're having to have to deal with. Does the police department keep a record of incidents of encounters with deers and automobiles? All this information could be useful in actually figuring out this problem in a sensible way and starting to tackle it. And just trying to make the community aware where deer are crossing, because there are certain areas that they do cross, and there's reasons why. So, kinda, it was disappointing here that January or February, we're gonna have a count. I don't know what that count is gonna do. I don't know how much that count is gonna cost, if it's gonna cost anything. And I just would like to see us, as a council and a community, start thinking about what we really can do to avoid incidences with deer, because it can affect all of us, our families, our properties, and a lot of things. I hate to see these deer walking around lame and dead on the side of the road. I do see a lot of it. So, and I wanna thank everybody for their hard work and diligence on the city side. I appreciate that. Outside of that, I really have nothing, but it's a concern.
Would you like to comment on that?
The, we rely heavily on the Division of Wildlife to help us with that process. The gentleman that gave the presentation is the one that has indicated that there would be an additional count. You know, they're the experts. The deer crossing and elk fence and all of that, my guess is your primary concern is along US Highway 24 and State Highway 67. I know there's different migration routes throughout town, but our speed limits in town are 25 miles an hour, not 55 or 45 or 35 as they are on the highways. So it would be significant coordination with CDOT to understand what their rules are, and they're gonna rely on their own State Department of Wildlife to help. But we'll have a conversation with Tim and see what a reasonable next step is. Was the count in January, February, or was it in the fall, with over a report to follow? None of the above?
I don't wanna be held exactly to a month. I know that they're gonna do a winter count again, because during the wintertime, we have a higher population of deer within our city limits. During the spring and summer times, it just typically disperses, but that's why we just wanna maintain consistency with his count. Your other question, yes, we do keep track every time we do have a deer accident. I would just touch briefly on the mountain lion issues. They've declined, which has been great news. However, as the rut kicks up in the fall, we're gonna have more car versus deer accidents, and it is a concern. So I am not willing to be the subject matter expert on this. Mr. Kanning has done a great job. He indicated that he is gonna continue working on this, but he is not in a hurry to do any kind of hunt or any kind of action like that, as am I. So there was a lot of, I took a lot of heat over that last article, and I just don't wanna go through that again. But there is a, there is a plan that he's got. He's also working with the other biologists, and I do know that this winter, they're gonna do an apples-to-apples comparison and do another deer count.
Chief, what can you tell us about the increase in incidence, if at all, relative to maybe last year or the year before?
I would have to pull my stats on it. We have roughly one to three animals a week we have to put down.
Is that consistent with what we've been doing?
Pretty much. I mean, that's the cost of having this many animals in town as they get hit by vehicles.
Great. Thank you very much.
Sorry you had to take heat over something that you shouldn't have to take heat over. I was just simply asking a question. Some people just don't understand what actually is going on, and they like to point fingers. I don't like to point fingers. I like to actually try to look for solutions as a team and work at those solutions over a period of time. I'm not asking for immediate results, but I am asking that we have one wildlife manager in the whole area.
Correct.
And you're right. We have to deal with CDOT, because the incidences I'm talking about that are of higher cause and higher impacts are along 67 and 24 inside the city. You have enough time. On those roads, you do not have the time to react to these deer, especially. I'm concerned about the shoulders of these roads, especially on 67, and the ability not to maneuver around these deer and other objects on the road because of the steep drop-off of the highway onto the shoulder and then some drainage situations that could cause serious damage to both deer and human. So it's something that really concerns me.
Chief, did you say one to three incidents a week?
They get reported. Sometimes we'll just get a report of a dead animal on the road that was hit. Other times, the damage is bad enough on the vehicle, they can't drive away. Most people do call in an accident when they do hit an animal, but with some people that have large bumpers, there's no damage to their vehicle. We'll come out there and dispose of the animal.
Okay. I have nothing to say, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, John. Thank you, sir. We will move on to the city manager's report.
Thanks, Mayor.
Couple things that we've talked about before, but we're continuing to move forward with, thanks to funding from Main Street, from the Chamber Visitor Center, as well as some funding from the city. We are moving forward with our downtown safety preliminary data collection. We've completed our downtown parking audit and the utilization counts, and we have a meeting scheduled for September 13th from 5:00 to 7:00 in city council chambers to talk about the results of the parking counts, and then to talk about different ideas and set some next steps for things that we can do to address opportunities, problems, concerns that we have with parking downtown. I have flyers for those, if you're interested in that, but I will be emailing everybody. The second part of this project is a downtown walking audit, and with a pretty extensive review of the walking environment downtown, block by block. That is scheduled for September 22nd. We will meet again here in city council chambers at 8:30 in the morning. We'll start, we'll do a little training, we'll send everybody out in groups to do the walking audit, and then meet back here about 11:30 for lunch and discuss what we found, and then, again, some next steps there. If you're not able to help with the audit, certainly join us for lunch and the discussions that we have. If you're not able to join us for lunch, certainly help us with the walking audit. Everybody's welcome. Like to see everybody get involved in that and help us be part of the solution on that. Debbie Miller and I were able to, last week, week before, go to the Destination Fort Carson event and hand out information on Woodland Park to some of the new families at Fort Carson. That was great. It was so much fun. I had a ball. I thought it was wonderful. Next week, we're going to the Caris Volunteer Fair for the new students at Caris to recruit them to volunteer for some of our projects. We're also working on the publication of the information for the Aquatic Center grand opening scheduled for October 29th, and some other events leading up to that public grand opening, and recruiting for jobs. Jobs are posted for the Aquatic Center, so recruit folks. We've got plenty of positions open. And then, end of the year, wrapping up our marketing. That's all I have.
Questions for Jenny? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Bye.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Included in your packet was the second quarter financial report for the city, which is through
June 30th. The report is also available on the city's website, and I also had sent that out to you about two weeks ago. Report contains an analysis and discussion on a lot of the city major revenues and also expenditures compared to budget and prior year amounts. Overall, revenues and expenditures are within expectations through a mid-year point, and fund balance in all funds remain healthy, and there's no concern with the city's finances right now. Just a couple of highlights I'd like to point out that are contained in the report. One of them is regarding our major revenue sales tax. It's up 3% over the prior year. July looks even better, I could say, so sales tax results are looking very encouraging through the first seven months even of the year. But I also mentioned, another highlight is that E-911 authority money, $170,000, that we budgeted in 2017, that, you know, I still wanna keep that out in the front, that we are dealing with that. We budgeted $170,000 based on estimates, and then the board, E-911 Board, did not approve providing that funding to the city and other jurisdictions. That money is used, or was used, in prior years to partially pay for dispatchers. But, you know, we're still keeping an eye on our budget overall, looking at the revenue, how they're coming in, and it will definitely keep revenues and expenditures and watch them closely as we begin moving into the 2018 budget. So at the end of June, the general fund, unrestricted fund balance is over 4.5 million. However, that will continue to go down as we continue the work on the Aquatic Center, and at the end of the year, it'll probably be closer to the $250,000 that we budgeted in the 2017 budget process. With that, if there's any questions?
On the sales tax increase, do you separate the 1% that goes to the school district? On the sales tax increase, do you separate the 1% that goes to the school district?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's good news then.
Yeah, I'm not counting that, otherwise, the sales tax would be quite a bit higher than the prior year.
Do we have an idea of where the cost of the operation of the pool is gonna be at this time?
I'm sorry, can you breathe?
I'm sorry, do you have an idea of the approximate cost for operating the pool at this time?
Operating, I don't have that answer.
I do, I don't have the number off the top of my head. It seems to me that the, an annual expense estimate was about $673,000, and an annual revenue stream was about $460,000. We knew that that amount, we knew that there was going to be a delta. So, it's 200, 250,000 is the delta, we will absolutely have that included in the budget. We knew that going into this, that there would be a supplement to that, even the feasibility study that the Woodland Aquatic Project did recognize that difference. As we've done this initial estimate, Cindy Keating and Karen Valdez have been extremely conservative in their revenue projections, and extremely, I guess liberal or conservative in their expense projections, meaning expenses higher than what they really think they'll be and revenues lower than what they think they will be. It will probably take two or three years for that sign curve to dampen out until we really understand what that operation looks like. We're financially stable enough to handle that difference, we're prepared to handle that. We'll have a really good idea probably six to eight months in, what it's really gonna look like, but those are our best estimates right now.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? Mike, thank you as always. Good job, we appreciate it.
And just a couple of things on the Aquatic Center, Mayor, Jane mentioned the grand opening on the 29th, that's from 2 to 6. Just a couple of other items on that, the hours of operation have been published. They were part of the rec guide, and that is available in hard copy from Park and Rec, and also it's online at our website. We're gonna release the fee structure tomorrow, the community has been anxious about that. We wanted to do our due diligence to make sure that we close that delta between expenses and revenues as much as we could. We think we have a phenomenal fee structure that will provide great service and variety for our community, many economic packages, there'll be discounts for certain categories, it's, we'll do well with that. So look forward to that, and you can tell your constituents that it'll be available tomorrow by the end of the day. Questions for the staff?
I know you've been working very diligently at the water treatment plant, how's it going?
Still continues very well. Today, they had a pretty large pour on the third clarifier. They're gonna start going vertical with some masonry as soon as they get done with that internal pour. A lot of equipment has shown up, like I showed you, the new generator and some of the new control panels are showing up now. And then, also tomorrow, we have about 130-yard pour on the last basin, on the floor in the last basin, and they can start going vertical with those walls around that. So, they're trying to get it all buttoned up before winter and move inside.
Sounds very good. When do you anticipate the completion date?
Final completion was June, I don't like to jinx anything, but they are projecting to be ahead of schedule.
And on budget, I'm sure.
So far, we're doing good, we've been fortunate enough to cut the corners in the beginning and able to do some upgrades that will save us in the long run.
Great, thanks, Kim. Anything else, council?
I'm sorry, I missed the last meeting, I had a situation. It's nice to meet you, I see you're new on, man, how you doing, buddy?
Very good.
How's it working for you?
Everything's great, people are taking care of me, I'm learning a lot and enjoying the public.
Is your background in construction?
No, it's primarily about 22 years as a civil engineer, eight years with the city of Colorado Springs, then the balance of which as a consultant.
Good, good resume. I just wanna say hello.
Thank you.
That's all we're gonna say.
Anybody else? Okay, we have no comments. Suzanne? Should I read this?
Oh, yes, yes, you can just vent in it.
Okay, yeah, the U-Pass Symphony Guild wanted to just express their thanks to the Teller County residents and visitors for the sounds of the Colorado Springs Philharmonic Orchestra. They say 5,300 attendees at the middle school, that's the day after the 4th of July, July 5th. It's always a great event, and the letter council is to thank for the $2,000 that we support them with to have the event. And so, on behalf of Carolyn Smith, the president of the U-Pass Symphony Guild, they just like to thank us, one of the great events in our community. Other than that, Suzanne, what else?
That's about it, Mayor.
That's it, we're gonna let everybody go home and watch the second half of football, thank you all for coming.